We will not count the water. Please call the roll.
Mr. Mendez?
Present.
Mr. Wood?
Present.
Mr. Cole?
Present.
Mr. Callen?
Present.
Mrs. Curley?
Present.
We would make the motion to accept the minutes of the last regular meeting as we never did.
Mrs. Callen is ready.
All right.
Say.
Motion made by Mr. Callen, seconded by Mr. Cole to accept. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? First case would be number 9775 61 Jackson Street. I have a word here. Dear Mrs. Curley, please accept this letter as our request to withdraw without prejudice naval development associates application to construct a single-family home at 61 Jackson Street. NDA has negotiated a agreement with the butter. Ahmed Rote located at 63 Jackson Street to sell the property. Mr. Rote leaves a lane with additional yard and parking area and has agreed not to build a home on the lot. However, he may build a garage or shed on the property sometime in the future. We are pleased to be able to sell this lot to Mr. Rote as we feel it is in the best interest of the neighborhood. It has been our longstanding intention to sell the property to the butter, but up until now, none of the butters were interested in purchasing the land. That could be a consideration, and we look forward to working with you on other initiatives. Sincerely, Charlie Gator. Charlie must be back. I saw him on the paper today.
He's back.
Yeah, good. Tell him I was asking. Hi. Next case.
Oh, we need a second. I'll draw.
Also, it's an idea. Way to first. Did you upset her? Motion made by Mr. Callen, seconded by Mr. Cole to accept.
We draw the vote.
With draw, that votes right. Please call the rolls.
All in favor?
Just all in favor? Aye, both. Case number 9772, 88 Union Street. Petitioner, 88 Union Street Realty Trust, Mahabhulak. Hopefully, it said that my trusted allow the construction of mixed-use building retail store and three residential units without the required Austrian parking requirements in the business district.
Chair, I want to turn to you.
Case, which is one on the case.
Mr. Mendez?
I'm going to turn to Sam by tally. With me is Mr. Hayden. We call him Duke. Duke is the owner of the property at a central district. Perspective is, I wanted to point out one thing. The property is in the central business district. There's no question on that. And he hadn't been questioning myself until I went back and looked at my original notes that said it's in the central business district. So I thought that the error had been made when he had filed the application, and actually it had been made a lot previously to that one. He went to the city council for a special permit, and the special permit application is reviewed and signed. It was filled in by, but as being in the business district. Although that's not so, it's in the section. And that makes a big difference with respect to the parking requirement. But notwithstanding that, we still need to get your approval for a specific reason that does require parking. And although the parking ordinance has no parking requirement in the central business district, it does have, and it was a malformation of a footnote and a prior addition of the parking ordinance in the zone ordinance, that when you have mixed use, that was allowed. And if you've seen and you've been participating in what it has meant for the downtown area to encourage on development of mixed use. But there were certain restrictions put upon that. And then they sort of struck footnote six that used to be to that table. But they didn't put in, in certain areas, some of the prior restrictions. And one of the prior restrictions that made it back in is in the last sentence of the applicability section of the parking ordinance and the zone ordinance. And it says that even though you don't need parking in the central business district unless you have three or more bedrooms, none of these are, like, humans, and none of them have three or more bedrooms. It said, notwithstanding that, the last sentence says that parking in the central business district is not allowed in the side or the front yard. And if you looked at Mr. Reed's plan, it shows, since this is Union Street, this is the front, and this is the side, that there is parking for five vehicles that meet the designing standards. And actually, five is more than the requisite number of spaces, but they're in the side yard. So we ask your approval to go further with the city council agreed upon unanimously, which was the construction of the residential units and the mixed use of the retail store. And we need your approval to put the parking, even though none really required, obviously, with this kind of a project, parking on, say, as much can be provided, should be. And we provide parking in the side yard. And as you know, on-street parking is allowed in this area, and there's a municipal lot not that far away. So we think that in terms of the real world, notwithstanding what the legal requirement might be, that this proposal was going away towards not only developing the downtown in the way that the city council had moved to encourage by its changes in the zone ordinance, but also by affording the people who were going to be living in the residential units off-street parking that's sufficient in that. I'd be glad to answer any questions that any member may have.
What is it? Do you have building plans?
Yes, yes, there are building plans. I think Mrs. Curley has it set.
The first floor is going to be apartment behind the store?
No, beside. In other words, if you look at this very first picture, I think it would be, as I understand, it's more than I said.
Yeah.
Yes.
What kind of experience?
Excuse me, yes. Mr. Wood's question is germane. A member asked me that question previously. There's two reasons for that. The kind of building encroaches on the public way. And so originally, we're going to demolish and take it down to the footprint. But when we have a building that encroaches on the public, we can't approach it.
Where's the public way?
It's like the street, yeah.
Oh, the street.
Yeah, so that what we were doing is sliding the building over a few feet and building a new building. But essentially, in the same way, it's, I mean, it's a few feet, one way, that's essentially it.
But if this is Union Street, isn't this behind this store?
Well, I suppose it's perspective, as I said when I looked at this. If you look at, Mr. Starr should teach me that once you had, you knew where the front was. Then, so since it's number 88, I consider that to be the front. That's why I said at the outset, this is the side. And so I guess we're saying, we're just describing the same thing, but in different ways.
So this is Union Street, this is the main street, and this is the first apartment that's behind the store.
Yeah, well, I.
Exactly, he said, for that.
But I'm just saying.
How is the model of that?
No, 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 but I'm just saying, when I looked at the building, looking at it this way as opposed to looking at it that way, that's how we came to the same sort of conclusion of characterize the difference.
So this is going to be moved over into part of the parking park that's being had?
The park, no, it's going to slide off the street so it doesn't encroach on the way. All right? See, the existing building, we said the sidewalk and street.
Right, it is.
Right. So it's going to slide in. You and I, it's going to slide this way, that way.
Into the, where the parking park is parked now?
Right. And then we're going to put the parking on the side, and that's why we.
You mean it's going to be raised, the existing building's going to be raised, and the new building's going to be constructed two feet further?
You got it, yeah. Right.
The, I can ask you, what kind of siding? What kind of siding?
The siding on the building, I don't know whether the architects want you to show the siding.
Siding.
Siding, just a regular siding.
Well, wait a minute. Let's see.
Can't find the same basics.
But you do not find the rising.
Can you put something there?
Yeah, so I hear like a tight, dicey.
That we have changed that because for two reasons. Each time I was basically changing it or something. Had to have changed the back, but it was still on the side.
I know. Final to me. Okay, that's why I was asking. My big family don't listen to it. But with that time, you need something. Final, update.
Yeah, I will tell you, I can, you can do things better than I can. I still don't tell by looking at it.
What Charlie did he pick up?
Wait, Charlie, we didn't, we didn't decide.
So like, like this right now is light blue color.
Neutral color?
Yep. Neutral, light foundation, neutral color, yeah.
Yeah, right now, we, we had a plan. But this is a strong side of the retail store, the union street, this is a contract.
So, yeah, so this is, this is.
It's from Harley Union Street.
Yeah, I see that, because we feel so. Put shutters in there, maybe it looks like a house. It's just a quite a lighter. That's the only thing.
Guess the next side.
Why do you say this? Why, what do you write about?
So you want to. No, we're not just. So you got, you can't, I can. On the side to the.
See, yeah, because of this height, you get siding runs.
Nine feet high.
And so. Up here, you have a problem with this too.
Kind of doubt.
She's answering. So you should have built the system, don't come back down.
Yeah.
And the only access to. The drawings say you were using the basement.
Well, originally, we're going to take it down today.
What I'm asking you is, so the drawings on my.
No, because now we learned we had to move the foundation.
Plus the foundation's probably not good.
Right. But once we knew we were encroaching, we had to move it.
So you're just generating the same footprint in a different location?
Yes. Sliding along. Okay, what's the exterior of this building? Well, one of the things.
Same, same. I mean, that's, that's the cheapest siding. You know, it could be anything, could be, could be that, what do you call it?
Hotty boy. James.
Well, I mean, on that, I don't mind it. I don't like the panels. But on this, that James Hotty boy, we're not doing it with the two, but the suggesting. James Hotty.
And I also thought there was a question by editor. You want the shutters there to be.
Yes, yes, I like, you know, it looks like a, you know, and I know it's a retail store, but you've got to file it up, you've got to pitch it up, you know, so shutters, whatever you can.
How long do you always build?
One year.
Maybe a year.
This one, you're this one.
This is what's going to happen.
Well, you're going to have three apartments now, right? You're going to have all this income.
Exactly.
Don't you think you can make this building work better than what you say?
He didn't design it.
No, I don't mean that. I mean, you thought, what you're going to do, he, he, does it, he, does it have, try to white mine, let's put it that way. Can't you put some money into it to make it look good? Sure. Like what?
Like, like we need a vehicle here.
Well, it's going to be, you're going to take down the existing building and build a new one.
Right, so I don't know what he's going to do.
I never expected you.
I know, but he puts it as a map. He, he bought this.
I understand. So that Mr. Callens was asking about aesthetics in terms of the exterior, and he was agreeable to the two suggestions of Mr. Callen.
The others might have spent on it too.
I like, what is, what is, what are you going to build this? What is the exterior going to be made of?
The walls and the wood, honey.
Yeah.
Outside. When I drive down the street, what am I going to be looking at?
First floor is a retail store.
I know, but I don't know what the building is going to be made of.
Yeah, this is how you want to.
Just now I have an idea. Just now I have an idea. I'll do that. I propose that idea.
Yeah, well, I want you to post the ideas tonight, because I want to know what I'm moving on.
Again, he's not a builder. The architect drew the plan.
That's fine.
And I think that the building, I would defer it, I suppose, to the calendar and to Dan in terms of reading the architect's plan. But in terms of the materials, I don't know what notes the architect put on there or anything.
There are none. It just says siding.
That's cool.
It just says siding, it just says W for window, doesn't say either fire, doesn't say either wood, either grills, doesn't say, you know, anything about the roof, doesn't say anything about, it just talks about the general building structure itself, doesn't have any specifics on the finished at all.
Another thing, in buildings, buildings like these, they usually have flower boxes.
They have.
The front flower boxes. You know what I mean?
Well, those are exterior changes, yeah, I think he said.
Yeah, but I mean, it really follows that makes it look good. Because there's no windscreen in there. There's nothing. Do I have a total windscreen in the house? It's the yellow and the pink. They do that all through the road. It takes a whole tower block. They have, they have huge flower boxes.
Exam, yes.
You know, I don't necessarily have a problem with what he's doing. I have a problem with the fact that he doesn't understand or know what he's doing. And, I mean, this, this is not, there's a lot of loopholes with this compared to what you're saying, so.
He hired an architect.
As the owner, it's incumbent on him to understand what he's doing with the stock control construction stamp. The architect's not going to come in and manage this project for him, I'm sure. I'm sure, this is, this is the extent of what the architect is going to do for you, correct?
I understood differently that it was controlled construction. Because anything other than a one or two family, as I understand it, is controlled construction.
Meaning, he has to control it. The general contractor, whoever builds this for him is going to be the controller of the whole thing, I understand.
I understood that the architect would then have to do an affidavit under control construction, saying how we conform to the state building code and to the local zone.
He stamped these drawings right there. He's done. He can, he can do whatever he wants.
Yeah.
As long as they conform.
Well, no, I thought, I thought that controlled construction, A, is a patch building code. And secondly, that that requirement, that as I understand it, that the building to come.
He doesn't have to. She doesn't have to be controlled construction.
Well, my, my experience here in Lynn is that if you go upstairs right now, and you pull up an application, it says right on it. If it's anything other than a one or two family, it says controlled construction. And then secondly, when you have controlled construction, they require, at least in Lynn, affidavit, signed by, registered here, or an architect. It says two or three things. How it conforms to the state building code, each, and how it satisfies the zone ordinance. And they put that in the file. So that's my understanding of what they're going to do in terms of the process.
And then they're done.
Yeah, they don't.
And then they're done. That's for the education of what I do for a living. I don't understand that.
But.
What I'm saying is, the architect's not going to make weekly visits on this project. I'll bet you.
Oh, I don't, I don't know whether they're going to make weekly visits.
Right. So what I'm saying is, he has no idea. You, could you, I could ask him four questions out of these drawings, and he put an answer.
I would agree. He met with, with the architect, with Roger. The last time I looked, there wasn't an IQ test or a how many did he get right to come before the Board of Appeals and has to relieve. You do require a plan stamped by somebody who's a professional. He's providing that plan. Now, that plan may not satisfy you, but in terms of what a petitioner would do, think about people who come in here to build a single-family house or a two-family house. Do you think that they're as skilled as you or Mr. Callen are in construction?
No, but I would expect that they're going to bring in the drawings of what they're going to do, and that's not what these are.
Yeah, he's going to come up with some answers because.
But he's going to rely on a professional.
He designed in the inside of those plans. Who, who's going to pull up, who's the GC?
Who's in? We, we just.
General contractor, we did not hire it. We got the offer for one, and we are waiting for the other one.
They're getting bids.
One from the community credit unions, done with one contractor, I forgot, I didn't bring it actually.
But do you have a general contractor lined up? Do you have a GC lined up, a general contractor?
Yeah, yeah, so I'm waiting.
So you're not, you're not going to pull up, you're going to get a general contractor?
They can hire something.
Yes, general contractor.
Okay.
And he's got, I think, two proposals.
And he's, he's, he's coming to make sure that meet with all the proposals.
Yeah, they met with Roger before they, they came in.
Because that is my contract with the architect. And.
If you're, if you're under contact with the architect, there should be no problem for him to fix the drawings, right?
Yes, they'll, they'll leave.
But they, they did meet with Roger.
And I think he, 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 he's for time to meet with Roger. He was a little bit early also, but I did not agree.
Yeah, I, I feel this is a good idea, but there's some things, you're going to need many here in the drawings. Mr. Gishon, that's his business, mine too. When we see something, we take it out because it brings trouble for the city.
I just don't think that this board would be doing the city any service by just giving somebody cockroach. We're not telling you we don't like it, we don't agree with it, but there's not enough information here, as far as I'm concerned. And I just can't give you, like, cock, like I say, cockroach to do whatever you feel like.
If the state gives them a list, I mean, if we give them a list of things, and we have, that's, that's, that's fine. And now if we catch them, we can, it gets the plan split up.
Well, that's, that's what I'm with me. Again, you've heard me say this before. I told you, I don't know hogging work from the hoggy boys on a building contract.
Yeah.
I do have some basic knowledge of how at least the building to not have a limit works, but I don't hold that out to the expertise of building there.
Yeah, but basically, yeah, when he's waiting for relief.
Right.
It's weak, and this board always likes qualified owner of a building. And it would be probably better, we could contain the meat, I suppose, and then have a list of things we can.
Yeah, I mean, if you, you've identified what you thought would be advantageous, and you've identified. But in terms of, I couldn't read those plans like the two of you could, and say, well, this is missing, that, I don't have that skill. But I'm certain if you guys align what it is, I understand what, I always know Mrs. Curley favors landscaping, I know you have a thing about the exterior, and Duke, at the very outset, when you questioned him, said he would be willing to do what it was that you wanted to make it more attractive. But I think that Dan had a different perspective about what might be needed or is missing from the drawings.
Well, everyone does.
Well, so I would agree with you, Mr. Callen. If you want to provide a list so we can give it to the professional and group the plans, and tell him this is what he's got to do, we'll do it.
While we have refined plans, what's the name of the architect?
It's engineering companies right here. You, I'll give you a shot at saying it, but. You know, the mask. No, we, oh, you got a hat.
Chief P is closest.
So, does this go before the city's site design committee for the central business district? I don't think so, because site plan review is defined as a project of 5,000 or more square, that's one of the reasons we met four times with Roger. Site plan review is required here, 5,000 gross square feet, the addition of 10 or more spaces, or you have a drive-through or whatever. So I don't think site plan review is applicable. And that's one of the first things with, why the architect didn't, with the building to park, to determine whether that would be required or not. Because as you know, the requirements on a site plan review, it had like 14 sets of plans and many other aspects. So I think they concur that because it wasn't more than 5,000 square feet, it wasn't the addition of 10 or more spaces, that it didn't need site plan review. Just, um, hypothetical, could he have built on the entire lot? That's a very good question. Whether, whether it's not, whether it's parking is still not required. I, I am of two minds on that, okay? I would say that in the business district, whether it's the central business district or the business district, there are only two dimensional requirements. Height and 50 feet of range. But putting that aside, I think once when you have a mixed use and you change uses, there's an argument that says you should try to satisfy what the residential requirements are. But we can't make the lot any bigger. I mean, the front edge of the lot has a lot of, and the existing building was already there. One of the questions about taking down the existing building is whether you would lose the ability to rebuild it in its current status as a, it's really a conforming structure under the business dimensional regulations. But they then adopted this mixed use in the central business district, and we went to the city council. By that time, they had amended the ordinance to take out, there used to be a separate footnote, if you recall, when you probably adopted it, that said you had to have Otis law so you could have, you know, they had that combination. Now they've gone to strictly, you can have retail and residential. And then to deal with the parking, they said if you have three or more bedrooms, then you've got to meet the parking requirement. But specific, it spells right, I think I have a section that says a one or two bedroom does not need to have parking. But. Notwithstanding that, that's why I pointed out to you, the size of the units are all less than 900 square feet. And it's a real, realistically, if people, you want people to live somewhere, they don't want to, where there's a parking pad, it's gone on the street. Notwithstanding that, you can pack on the street, if it's a city or idea bar, but section 9.3 of the off-street parking has this formula, which used to be in a footnote, that says if you have three or more bedrooms, then you need one space, and if you have two, and then if you have whatever. So it says one or two bedroom units required. So even though it's not required, we wanted to have spaces, and Dan wanted, we had an earlier plan, and the earlier plan was trying to jam in as many spaces into a smaller lot. And then I suggested it would be better to have spaces that could work, you could actually drive in and out, and, and leave some area of the lot. And that's when I went back and looked and saw there was no required parking, but then you see, I underline, it says no off-street parking shall be permitted in the central business in the front of the side yard. And you and I have a different perspective as to where the front and the side is, but it's clearly the spaces are in there, and that's why we're here.
Can I just ask my question on clarification? I just wondered from the last page of these plans.
Yeah, that plan changed because of the reason I just outlined. Because you see, angle parking has a different requirement. If you look at this parking, there's no real way in and out on that lane. And so, but they were trying to maximize the number of spaces. And I suggested that it would be better to have spaces that work, that you could actually drive in and drive out, that didn't encroach on the five-foot park, that were of the requisite size, and then had a handicap space, had the additional spaces. And since you've got three units, we've got five spaces, and since they're all, none of them are three-bedroom units, we thought that this would work. And so we changed the documents. Right.
And just, just to clarify, the only reason you're before this board is because of parking, right?
Yeah, because use, any residential, first of all, any residential use generally in the business district requires. Yeah, because use, any residential, first of all, any residential use traveling in a business district provides consequence. But secondly, mixed use in the central business district, we went to the city council and got a fool with the city council first, and then we came here. And then in coming, before we came here, we went to the building department to talk about site plan review. And, and that's when I discovered, okay, by looking at the zone here, that previously, people had given him information that was not accurate, in that they said it was in the business district. And that's why they drew up this plan to try to get as many spaces as possible. But it's not in the business district, in the central business district, there is no required parking, but that doesn't mean that notwithstanding that fact, you are not to provide it if you can. And if you're gonna provide it, you are to provide it, sort of really worse. I think I said this to the manager before, a great judge once said, you can't drive a fire truck over a plant. And what the judge was saying is, it's great to show me like a fire laying on the plant, but it's gotta work. And so, at the end of the day, we came down with this plan which works for parking, and provides five spaces even though none are required.
Yeah, this, this area in here, can that be used for snow storage?
Yeah, yes.
Yes, there's not, there's not always.
But you see, parking, because of the irregular shape of the lot, there's no way you could really drive a car in here, but use.
No, but you push it over there with a snowboard. Just, you know, you can't, there's no hand, you can't put it on the street, you understand?
You gotta put a snow storage on it.
Yeah.
Right, so do you understand what he's saying there?
Storage, snow, otherwise you're gonna carry it off.
So unfortunately, we're the only site design review.
Yeah.
Checks and balances on this project.
Yeah, I know, and we haven't been here.
I just have one more thing, if we're gonna add, add some information to the plan is the possibility of, of putting a roof over that exterior staircase on the back of the property.
Is that an E, projecting E?
That's the second means of E, Chris.
Yeah.
You're talking about projecting E?
Yeah, of, of the two doorways and maybe something.
Do you understand what he's saying there?
Yeah, Mr. Cole is very dangerous over this.
Coming down and all the staircases and all, so that's a great.
Case to be.
Yeah, so what they want is that the project, what we call in the zone where there's a projecting E, however, it's a roof covering over the staircase, so the elements can't get.
Well, that's not a.
And also, you're going down the stairs. Some, just take a look at putting something in there that might be some sort of shelter going down the stairs. I mean, the alternative is to fully enclose it, and that, you're, you're, you've gotta change the whole, the whole, the whole back of your building, but at least some sort of covering.
Cover or, or cover the whole piece.
Yeah, take a look at that, okay?
Yeah.
Is there a dumpster or anything?
There isn't.
Right now, no.
No, no.
But the wall.
Where?
Dumpster?
I don't know where he showed. No, 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 no.
We have that side. Does it?
He's talking about on wheels.
A small one, you're pulling.
You put on wheels, right, how the patent regulates the size of dumpsters based on use? What he's talking about is like, what are they called, rolling?
Little ashtrays?
Yeah.
It's a small.
Yeah, it's small, and you can bring it forward. See, I learned that about the building.
That's what he's still like, the terms that you're asking.
Any other questions on the board?
I have no questions, I'm left out. Mr. Chairman, I think that all board members, and right today, feel should be added a change, given to a second term of term of term. And so, she can make a list, and then she get an email.
That would be helpful to put there, us to the architect.
Yeah, right.
And for Duke to understand what it is you want.
Right. We can do that this way.
Should we continue with them, to January?
Correct, I'm watching, thank you.
And, uh, we're gonna get this list, was that what they?
Yes.
Dan?
Go to the on the second, excuse me.
No, 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 I just wanted.
No, you know, within a week, I suppose.
Yeah.
Okay, well Gina and I, we trade dollars.
Motion made by Mr. Callen, second by Mr. De Sono, to continue to January the 13th, 13th to 30th. Please call the board.
Mr. Mendez?
Uh, yes, to continue.
Mr. De Sono?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Callen?
Yes.
Mrs. Curly?
Yes.
I won't be here on the third, as I'm, I'm counsel, Mr. Callen. Thank you. I don't know when you'd ask me to, but if it's on the third, I just wanted to say, I guess, given the election results, I could say Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Case number nine, seven, seven, three, one, fifty Essex three, petition of Paul U., by Mr. Trader John I., on the allow him to be a family to work in a car.
Oh, yeah.
This is less than required area, parking, side yard, and rear yard. There shall be no exterior changes to the building, any more plans of interior.
My thoughts on that, after reviewing the letter from the council, Council of Seer, and speaking of Council of Seer, the fact that we draw above prejudice, was the opportunity to sit down with Council of Seer and review the matter.
Yeah? What is the word?
From the commission of the draw above prejudice.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Callen, second by Mr. Cole, for them to withdraw the document. You're welcome. Gina, Mr. Woodhouse?
Yes, this is Woodhouse. Case number nine, seven, seven, four, forty-three, forty-five, Amity Street. Petition made for development association, chartered, president. Allow the construction of a single-family home in the Saginaw Hill car over road district on a lot containing 4,261 square feet, with less than required rear bench. Good evening. Peggy South representing neighborhood development associates, ten Church Street, Lynn, Mass. And with me tonight, it was Thomas Chaffayer, Savannah, and, um, just the panel. It's a single-family home, built on the scrap, three bedrooms, six total rooms, one and a half baths, with less than the required area and less than the required range. But we feel though, it's, it's a lot that's related, requires some site time, and it would be beneficial to consider.
Mr. Scott, can you say, I'm sorry, that they get a frostbite?
Yes.
Okay, there's a slide, and sometimes they build the ranchers.
Did this house, the same house that we built over on Sockwood Court?
Oh, yeah.
Before the wrong was there?
Yeah.
Same, you know, fade it.
Yeah, so we don't see a section.
See that?
I know, I'm sorry. Easy to travel with.
So how many bedrooms?
Three beds.
The house is on Sockwood Court, a beautiful.
Oh, thank you.
The one they really approved, I thought, this is fantastic.
It is, yeah, that house fits nice on the line.
So it's basically the same, what's saying, if the lines like.
On Sockwood Court, yes, yeah. Yeah, I just looked.
What's your, what's your color scheme?
Well, something a bit similar to Mr. Arndt's.
Because, actually, it's good that it's got some height, so you got the three family next door.
We, yeah, we needed some height.
So we are kinda going up.
Yeah, the graduation would fit nicely into the street scene.
Final signing.
It is not signed, however, it's a, it's a better grade, it's probably the best grade of wire sign that we have on. It's a housing product, but it's there, um.
They got the four houses on Sockwood Street.
Yeah. And it's a. Chase away. This is strong.
Yes, it's, it's very expensive.
Well, I know you know that.
Yeah, in the front, we can just see the refresh. Right, so we turned off all the windows with the climbing stop, so it's, it's very. I mean, I, we're not opposed to using the heating, I have that, it's a very nice product. So we do find that most of these homes that we build, and sometimes they want to sold to, to.
I remember that one.
In the long term, it makes more sense to have a three-story area.
They're paying for the high-end.
Yeah.
Well, the other thing too, down there with the soft air, I wonder if this would even hold up better?
It's probably, yeah, it probably will be.
The heating. Cause I know, you don't realize it, but there's a number one exterior woodings down there.
But the heating point is by far the much, I'm surprised, but we, you know, for our reasons. Yeah, we just tend to, to be our towards. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I know. I don't follow this right.
Any other questions on the board?
I have no questions.
The letter here from Council Seer. I respectfully request your honorable board to grant the above-mentioned petition. The neighborhood development associates Inc. has done tremendous work in the city, and this project will complement the Amity Street neighborhood that would advance your assistance in the matters of Cecilia Darren, P.C., Council of Ward Three. What is the wish of the board?
Uh, the board, office. Question again.
I'm gonna be able to, no. It's been a long time since I said this. Anyone? I think I'm getting a little ahead of myself here. Anyway, anyone here wishing to speak in, um, opposition? Anyone here in opposition, hearing that, hearing this call for those, we should just speak in opposition, what is the wish of the board?
Question again. Okay.
Motion made by Mr. De Sono, second by Mr. Callen, to grant, please call the board.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. De Sono?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Callen?
Yes.
Mrs. Curly?
We've done this study, we have the same, we have the records, yeah.
How many, how many beds, three bedrooms? And how many small rooms?
It's a, it's a small house, it's 22, I believe. We put these options on.
Yeah, that's just accurate. So, you order by twenty-three, hundred, two, minus the garage.
Case number nine, seven, seven, six, twenty-nine, Carrot Street. Petition made of development associates, chartered, president. Allow the construction of a single-family home in their own, uh, residence, district, and all containing 4,261 square feet, with less than required area, front and back, side yard, and most of that lot of parking, which is less than 12 feet. Um, Peggy South representing neighborhood development associates, ten Church Street, Lynn, Mass. We're here tonight in the honor to petition the board to build a single-family home on 29 Carrot Street. This was a lot that was previously owned by the city of Lynn, um, the city of Lynn, um, the city council dedicated to the Lynn, to the neighborhood development associates. There was a two-family home in this lot, it extended almost the entire length of the lot. What we're just trying to do is to put a single-family home. We've actually asked for quite a few variances there, one in area, front edge, left in the side. Um, we're looking to, um, this is the, uh, area that's, uh, just about five feet. And the reason for that is that we wanted to, um, hold a.
To make, to make a special garage. They did, they have a, a garage for five, that's the other.
Rather than the seven, yes, yeah, less than.
Their, their original homes, they're two feet of that. And that's a very old apartment, for a, for a.
And we position the house so that it follows the line of the houses already existed, so we have the same house. Yeah, the house. On the street, and I think that's important, to try to build a new house that will be. Only if you have two whole things.
So, came back as far as the school. Came back as far as the school.
I think you did, I, I never saw the, the house. I did have a, I should have put a log.
Which house is this, not your wedding on this?
This is the, uh, same house that we built, uh, we built this quite a, quite a bit, it's a house that works very well. It's the house on the corner of, um, Glenwood and, is it, no, I'm sorry, Lambert and Easton Ave.
Oh, the next.
So that's Max, and, and, yeah, very close.
That's a nice house. Don't want wet naked pants.
Yes, like naked pants, and it's, again, it's a six, uh, six-room house, three bedrooms, one and a half baths.
Yeah.
And you know, where the, where Glenwood's very next to it, yeah.
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 How many bedrooms?
Three bedrooms, yep, and one and a half baths.
Now, the one on Lambert had a.
Oh, you have the driver here, okay. Yeah, the one on Lambert had a.
That's the right, it's in the back.
Back, yeah, that's the way it worked, that one, yeah.
I don't, I don't see any neighbors, so I guess everybody's in favor.
Jan, we're sitting on this, Mr. Mendez?
What did you want?
It's up to you, actually.
It's the one.
I'll say it again. Keep it blast off.
Okay.
No, we rotate it.
You'll rotate, Mr. Mendez.
Okay.
Anyone else, just, any other questions on the board?
I don't know.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor, is a petition, anyone wishing to speak in favor, giving not hearing is called, for those wishing to speak in favor. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, anyone not in session? Giving not hearing is called, for those wishing to speak in opposition, what is, I have, I have a question, um, Council Seer. I respectfully request your honorable board to grant the above-mentioned petition. I would want to be counsel on the side of our proposed construction of a single-family. In years past, this property was a part of the neighborhood. The residents started to support this project, and it certainly is a part of the neighborhood. Again, I fully support this project, but I thank you for advancing your assistance in the matter, Cecilia Darren, P.C., Council of Ward Three. What is the wish of the board?
Moving petition be granted, sir.
Motion made by Mr. Mendez, second by Mr. De Sono, to grant, please call the board.
Mr. Mendez?
Yes, to grant.
Mr. De Sono?
Yes, to grant.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Callen?
Yes, to grant.
Mrs. Curly?
Yes.
Yeah, it is.
Maybe you can.
So, I, I'm okay with your two, we're in the, in the.
It's right, you see?
Yes.
Again, thank you so much.
Yeah, you can get that a whole year, maybe.
Sure, you're nice. Thank you.
Thank you. See you, Jack.
Thank you.